Good afternoon, I now call to order the Tuesday, June 10, 2025, 3:00 PM School Board Workshop. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Please join me in the National Anthem, I'm the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight? O'er the land larks we watch, where so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, as she glares, is a ensign's red flag; through the night, as our flag was still there; oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, we'll move on to roll call, starting at the end of the table.
Lauren Ramirez, present.
Janie Ruddy, present.
Derek Morris.
Kristy Chong.
Lil' Furry.
Shaka Moore.
And we have Superintendent Moore on virtual today along with some additional staff who are at a conference. And so we will move forward to additions or changes to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes Superintendent Moore?
No, I do not have any.
Okay, then I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Vars.
Second.
Taken by Vice Chair Chung. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, we will move forward with today's agenda. So that leads us to public comment. Do we have anybody signing for public comment?
No, there's none.
Okay, so we will close public comment and move on to Finance Consent, 7.01. We have a request for board approval of Imagine Charter School Financials. And do we have Ms. Wormack online?
Yes, I am on, yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon Chairman Furry, Board Members and Superintendent Moore. I will be able to take any of your questions on finance consent at this time.
Okay, so for Imagine, are there any questions or concerns for the financials there?
There was a question brought up by Mr. Ruddy earlier today that I have reached out to the Regional Finance Director. It's regarding the capital outlay on page two. And once I get a response, I will be sure to update all of you. I do believe I need to get a corrected statement from him.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to that. Are there any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Hearing none, we will move forward with 7.02. This is board approval of purchase orders over 10,000.
Just to be clear on the Howard Industries, can someone just give me an overview of that one? What that's for? I'm assuming that's for computers.
Which, can you tell me the vendor name again?
Howard Industries. Industries, I'm sorry.
Is that on this one? Oh yeah, there it is.
That is sales tax, it's for 32 tablets. It's actually a total of 150. It's for 32 tablets or also referred to as notebooks.
For who?
It's computer tablets, which is also referred to as notebooks.
Okay.
It's actual carts that carry all the tablets as well.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Any other?
They're carts that carry the tablets, probably like a charging part?
They store the tablets and...
For 32?
In little storage spaces, I guess you would say.
Right, how many do we get?
Ryan.
Is it 32?
150 total.
150, okay.
They hold 32 tablets per cart.
Per cart, 150 of them. Thank you.
All right, if there are any other questions, we'll move on to 7.03, Vendor Payments.
I did have a question that I think Mr. Bush can provide some context to regarding the $900,000 plus that was provided to 4C's Trucking and Excavation.
Yes, I would like Mr. Bush to explain that. I know he did email earlier about that.
Yes, I did email. I'm not sure if you did receive that. So there was a couple of things that happened. One of the major things, the lighting in the front parking lot, we had problems with that that went back to the factory. So there was a long time of them trying to figure out what was going to be the resolution. And some of their fixes, we were not okay with. So 4C's was not, they were working with us and did not want to bill that until, even though it really was not their responsibility, it was under the project, them being that main one. So that's one of the reasons. And then with ODPs and the closeout paperwork and documents and things, it just took a little bit longer than it normally does. But that was the reason why there was a 10-month delay between one payout to the final payout.
So you're saying, so just to give context, this is in relation to the parking lot improvements at FPC?
That's correct.
And that there was a payout 10 months ago for part of the work, but some of it was withheld because of final requests from your team. And even though those items were light-related and maybe not the equivalent of $900,000, that chunk of money was held until we were satisfied. And because 4C's employed, I'm assuming subcontractors, they took ownership to fix that before that payment was made.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any others on vendor payments? All right, so we'll move on to 7.04. This is for deletion of inventories. Long list this time here. We've got a bus going to be auctioned. So then we'll move on to 7.05, Approval of Finance Budget Amendments.
I think I would love to have Ms. Wormack just speak to the adjustments on here from the third calculation to provide and educate us around where those came from, why those are negative amounts, and what the overall impact to our finances are due to those.
Okay, so Wormack?
Sure, so I do have a calculation that I can send you all for a better visual. This is the net effect of the third calc. When the budget is first done in the first conference report, the scholarship vouchers are included in that as well as the holdbacks on that they do to try to protect the school districts, make sure they don't overspend. So in the third calc, the scholarship vouchers come out of our revenue, which is part of that large number there, the 11 million. The total was about 14 million. And when you net out the discretionary piece of it, that's how you get the net amount. There's also other things involved there as our revenue changes. There's a few categories, and there's still mental health, safe schools, class size reduction. As those are reduced, we have to reduce the revenue as well. Also, the expense side of it, as we have to include the scholarship revenue, we also have to include the scholarship expense when we do the budget because we know we're going to lose that money. But if we don't include the expense in the original budget, it's going to understate our expenses. So the result of what you're seeing here primarily is the impact of scholarships on both the revenue and the expense side of it. This is to get our revenue back, our revenue and expense back in line. As you'll see on our district financials, the actual FFP revenue is now more in line once we take the scholarship funds out.
Thank you so much for that context.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions on this agenda item? Hearing none, we'll move on to 7.06, Approval of District Financial Statement. If there are any questions or concern, we'll move on to Request Board Approval for the 2025-26 Tentative Trim Calendar.
I will state that this trim calendar has to follow a very strict timetable from the Department of Revenue in trying to schedule the meetings. I believe I was able to get every single public hearing and budget meeting on a Tuesday where we already had board meetings. The only thing that may change on this tentative timetable would be the time. Once we are able to meet again in senior cabinet next week, I will go as the superintendent and firm up the times to make sure I've left enough time in between board meetings. Other than that, every Tuesday meeting will fall on a board meeting date. So there's no additional days where these meetings have to be scheduled outside of our normal meetings.
All right, so hearing no questions or concerns on this one, that will close out Finance Consent. Thank you, Ms. Wormack.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Academic Services, Request Approval for Flagler Youth Orchestra, 9.01. And we have Mr. Jeff Reeves, welcome.
Welcome, good afternoon Chairman Furry, Board Members, Superintendent Moore. Before you have a few items for us today, beginning with Flagler Youth Orchestra. This is going into our third year of our new alignment, and the contracts are before you. There is one edit that's being made. Ms. Ruddy pointed out to me that everyone would like to have Ms. Burke's contract. It's $1,083 per hour. It's actually per month. That is being corrected. Once she signs, that'll be updated.
I'll tell my references not to call you then.
Good catch.
And have we, how have they been doing with the fundraising to cover their side of the?
They've done well. They've looked within their means as well as far as both utilizing the resources from the district, but also raising their monies through the program. We increased ticket prices last year, this year, for them by $2. They hadn't been raised in years to have a little more closer to the line and reflect what's actually happening. And it did not impact their attendance at all. They've done an exceptional job in averaging about 200 students per year in the program. We did, worked with Ms. Wormack, worked to, as the budget constraints, we did reduce their budget by 4% along like everybody else did. And we worked it out, what I did with Dr. Luce, who was the executive director of it, and aligned so we can continue to provide our services for our students in a little more cost-effective manner.
Okay, and when will we, I don't know, when will we see sort of the financial update of the program? Is that planned to come back before, is it any?
We can certainly arrange for that.
Okay, I'd just like to see how, since we brought it in under the teaching and learning, how it's been progressing and how the fundraising and finances are flowing.
Absolutely, we can take care of that.
Mr. Reeves, I would recommend that probably comes sometime in July after, in July or August after all the expenses are through for the fiscal year.
There's a stealth contract for June 30.
I'd prefer to see a complete picture, so that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Wormack.
Thank you.
Any other questions about FYO?
No, okay, so we'll move on to 9.02. And this is a request for approval of University of Florida and Flagler School Due Enrollment Articulation Agreement.
This is the continuation of the agreement. Two options to us, and we're doing a shorter version too, just to attach an amendment to the document to extend it for two years. We've been doing this now since Mr. Tag was our superintendent. And each school was allotted 10 student slots. And almost every year those slots are filled, and our students get to experience the dual enrollment opportunity with the University of Florida. There's been no real changes to the contract as far as costs or any issues for that. So this is just a continuation for two years.
No, no cost?
No additional cost.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sorry.
Is that like remote, just carrying it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we will now move on to 9.03, Requesting Approval for the 2025-2026 Daytona State College and Flagler School Due Enrollment Articulation Agreement.
And this again is a continuation of our agreement with them. We do ours annually with DSC. There's no major changes to the program as well. No additional costs. It's a combination of both virtual and face-to-face. Just a couple of things, there's some minor tweaking to some language of the names of programs that they've changed on their side of it. But there's no reflection or change for us on our side of that. There's two appendixes, A and B. A is the equivalency of updating the sheets, and we don't get that from the state until like July or August. And once we have that, that'll be uploaded into the documentation. It happens every year for us and with every other college from the state. Penix B, the only change that did come up from them was that if we were to lose our employee, our Flagler Schools employee, who was administering the DSC courses on our campuses, and for whatever reason they were to leave, then, and we didn't have someone to back them up, then they would revert to DSCs as far as the instructional component of that. But Ms. Bosh and I worked closely out to make sure that we have, our principals have people on our campuses to back that up so they stay on our campus with our teachers.
Very good. So then we'll move on to 9.04, This is Student Travel Consent for Field Trip.
It is the FPC show this time. We have six field trips total, four for sports and two for SDAG.
All right, board, is it no other questions on this agenda item? We'll move on to 9.05.
Our last item is an opportunity for Scott Reynolds, our Coordinator of Assessment Accountability. He is also the president for FCTM and is going to the national conference for them this year. And it's a great opportunity for us to send our staff to experience like we did with Alvez and others to extend and to have those opportunities for growth to bring back to our district. It is at no cost to the district.
And so if there aren't any other questions on that, we will close out Academic Services. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Reeves. Okay, so we will go on to Operational Services Consent, 10.01, Proportionate Share Mitigation. And we have Mr. Davina with us today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Perry.
You're my day free meditation.
And today I bring to you the proportionate share agreement for Seminole Palms Faces 2 and 3. We've already had mitigation for Faces 1 and 4. This one, the second and third phase, they have 292 units in the project, and it's expected to generate 64 students. We don't have any capacity in the high school or middle school, so they're going to mitigate for 39 student stations, and that's about $1.43 million. It's going to be spaced out in three direct payments to the district. Three 30% payments of $425,100 every payment. The first payment starts 60 days after the final plat, then 21 months after the second one, and then 42 months after. Normally they do prepay at the rate they build. So if they build faster, then they prepay. The last amount, the 10%, is paid directly to the city in the course of business of applying for building permits.
The overall was $1.4 million?
Yes, sir. It's based on the DOE cost factor.
You said earlier that this mitigation, they were doing middle school, there wasn't room. That's the first time that's been brought up in a mitigation, so can you clarify that a little bit?
Normally our capacity is district-wide. We review concurrency district-wide. So if there is no capacity at one school level, let's say elementary, then we look at the rest of the district, the elementary schools. In high school and middle school, we don't have any capacity at all. So that's why they are mitigating for each student station. We do have a middle school and/or a high school in our five-year work plan in 2029, 2030 in design. Those monies are going to wait staff.
Okay, no, the reason why I, we keep getting different timelines on when that middle school or high school might be. It's been five and it's 10, and now it's sounding like you're saying five again, so I guess that there's a...
Well, our work plan, the five-year work plan is a matter of, it's kind of like a moving target.
So as the numbers keep changing, we're always just, you know, so are we looking now more, are we looking at five years out for a middle school now, again?
That is the plan in the program. It depends on if we do have the funds, if we do have the funds.
Okay, great, thank you for that, Claire.
Can I, just a, because I thought the last meeting I heard 10 years, and then so it is five years? And if we have the plan or the money, or the student?
I don't think there would be a concrete number as that is like to scale based upon enrollments, right?
And the enrollments are having flattened, which kind of puts it on the ball bone.
And based on our, the five-year plan, the capital plan and the work...
And based on our, the five-year plan, the capital plan and the work plan, I mean, we've been at five years. Last year was five years, it's still five years. I'm not sure where the 10 years came in. I haven't heard that one.
I've heard seven.
Well, and that may be as far as opening, because what we're, when we're talking five years, we're talking about our plans to start building, which then would take two to three years depending on what that would be. So I guess...
Well, I think it had something to do with the, with our enrollment numbers, you know, being that a lot of the reduction in enrollment was actually in, well, this, it was in high school. It wasn't in the elementary or middle school. So that would make sense that the middle school would come sooner than the high school, that those numbers are correct. But as I know, this is, this is a fluid...
Oh, yes.
And, and you know, and I guess the hardest thing is that, you know, we can't, from my understanding and the time that I've been on the board, is that, you know, we can't build the schools until we, the need is there. So we can't build a school and then fill it up. We have to have the need and then build it. So that, it's a time crunch.
Right. And again, you know, I'll be bringing the five-year capital plan to you all sometime around in July, and then the work plan will be in October after the count. So, I mean, I don't see that, that changing at where we're at with the numbers right now. However, you know, it would be nice if we, enrollment would increase, so.
And you know, and that could, you know, this is just the beginning of, you know, I think we're feeling the, 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 the beginning of the vouchers taking the full impact. And, you know, we just don't know how parents and students are going to respond to their new choices. You know, they could say, you know what, it was fun to try this out, but you know what, it's not for me. Let's, let's send them back to Flagler School. So I think we're gonna really keep a close eye on those numbers for sure, so.
How are you, when you have a transfer of leadership at a school, and you have an established five-year capital improvement plan, how do you typically, because we have some transfers and some changes happening specifically in Matanzas with Ms. Bozeman. So how do you then sit down to get the new vision of the new administration coming in, but also, you know, reconcile what was previously requested?
Well, I'll try to meet with them, but we do have facility meetings monthly where the, my supervisor, they meet with their staff there, go over if there's any needs different than maybe what was on the five-year plan. We also have a project request form. So if there's something that they're wanting that may, that's not been captured on the five-year plan, then we ask them to fill that out. What does that look like? How, you know, what is the urgency of that? And then we have to look at funding.
So the current plan doesn't get scrapped? It's just like, let's evaluate it, and you can start adding your items to it? Gotcha.
Unless the new administration were to look at something and say, I don't feel that that's as important as this. I would like this to move to the right.
So it'd have to be a pretty big change?
Correct. So, but that again is us working with each administration at that facility and what their wants, needs, et cetera.
And in beginning of last year, what we've also done when we hire a new principal is Marcus schedules each department in a rotation, very similar to the onboarding that you folks had, where each department goes through the top topics.
Yes.
With regard to the agreements and the impact fees here, are you still seeing that the numbers are pretty much holding true when these developments are coming in in terms of the number of students coming to our schools?
They are coming in, but where they're going to is, the growth is more towards the private schools because of the vouchers. We do have meetings with other school planners, and the consensus is within five to six years, the absorption rate of, the absorption in private schools will reach a plateau, and then the growth will come back to the public schools.
So are these developers asking for adjustments in the impact fees because of that, or no?
Right now, no. Because we don't have, it will have to be based on another review of the impact fees. But right now, what we have now is in place. I don't know if, because we still have that overcapacity in the high schools and the middle schools.
And how often are those impact fees evaluated?
It's every year, or if there's a... No, the student generation rate is reviewed every year, but that's in concert with, sometimes with the impact fee review. Right now, normally a review of the impact fees would be by directive of the board.
Yeah, because, you know, when was the last time the impact fees were evaluated then?
Twenty-two.
That sounds about right.
Okay, last question. Sorry. Have you noticed, and I'm not sure if you have this information. I think Dave might be the one who typically keeps his finger on the pulse of that in terms of the number of applications for future developments. Has that started to slow? I've heard rumors that the housing industry or sales, this is, we're now seeing more supply than demand. So is that slowing at all, or no?
It's still, it's stable. We're receiving at least one or two requests for a currency review and reserve capacity.
One or two per month?
Every month.
Wow. Okay, that's still a lot.
But one is sometimes unbinding, which means they're still exploring...
I'm just curious.
The potential of that development and what it means to, what the impact is to our capacity, and if there's going to be mitigation that's involved. Normally if there's mitigation, they look at how much it's going to cost them, and sometimes they do change their models.
And, and some of these that we, that we approve here, you know, they could, they could wait, you know, five, 10 years to even start the project, right? Typically, or are they ready to break ground usually when it gets to us?
When it gets to us, that's before final plat. Like, for example, Seminole Palms was the, the last mitigation agreement was in 2023. So that was probably in 2022, 2023 that they were approved. So it takes a while.
Right. So it's like, just because they come before us, it could still be years before the first house is built.
It's before they go fully built.
But isn't this one already, like, because I live over there, so this is where they already cleared all that land, and there's, like, they've done the, like, the water system and everything.
The phase one and the phase four is already gonna have, so they have utilities there.
Okay, so about a two years between they decide to build, start to pay, and now they've established the underground infrastructure in which they're probably starting to do those houses, I see. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Until they start 3D printing houses.
That'll be interesting, see if that comes to Flagler County. All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob, you're gonna stay with us, right?
Yes.
All right. So we're gonna go on to Human Resource Service Consent and 11.01, Student Teacher Affiliation Agreement with St. Petersburg College.
Okay. First thing, the one with St. Petersburg College, we have already approved. So there's a little mix-up here in that this one is for UCF, which I've actually had our district attorney take a look at. So this is not the one that will be presented for UCF. I'll be presenting that one at the next board meeting.
Okay, so 11.01 will, has, has been presented, or will present in the future?
Okay, so SPC has already been presented and approved. And this one here, there's kind of a mix-up. And this is one for UCF.
So it's titled just wrong?
Yeah, the title is wrong.
They're all the same.
But this one is, this is, this is one that we will be presenting at the next meeting, because there are some changes. I had our district attorney take a look at it, and he had some changes on there. And so the updated version of the agreement with UCF will be presented at the next meeting.
Okay, so are we talking about 11.02?
And we're now, we're talking about 11.02.
So that'll come to the, to the 1:00 p.m. workshop before our next business meeting? Is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So point two is the one with UF.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So, well, 11.01 was just, okay, now it was...
It was just titled wrong, but it still needs...
We're still reviewing 11.02.
11.01, but we will review 11.02, because this one has been vetted by our district attorney. We have already made the necessary adjustments to it, and now we just need approval from the board. And so in 11.2, this is Flagler Schools has the opportunity to establish a partnership with University of Florida, under which UF students may participate in teaching internships, practisms, and classroom observations at schools located in Flagler County School District. The partnership will support the professional development of future educators and service a strategic initiative to recruit highly qualified teachers to the district. What we will be required to provide is, we'll be assigning students to school sites. And so that will be our purview to figure out what schools these students will be working at. Additionally, we'll provide that supervision. UF will provide us the evaluation forms for which we'll be evaluating those students based upon the criteria that's established by UF.
Is there any, you know, we may get students or we may not? Is that how that potentially works?
Yes.
It's not like we're guaranteed a certain amount of students or anything like that?
So typically, when a school has students in our general area and they feel like we're gonna be, they're gonna need our support, they'll reach out to us. So for example, UF has a couple of students that they feel will benefit from this partnership with Flagler County Schools. And so they've already got a couple of students that will need to provide some type of internship for. UCF as well, they feel like they've got a few students that as of April 1st, they would need a school or two to place students for their further development.
Because a lot of times they allow at the university level for their senior internships to go back home or where they'd want to be looking for their job. So this is actually good news when, you know, the bigger universities reach out, means that somebody probably wants to come home.
That's what I was hoping for. Okay, great.
Back in the day, you had to, when you were a student teacher, you had to be under the supervision of an established teacher. But that established teacher also had to have some sort of credential in order to have a student teacher under them. Is that still a thing? Do we have enough of those teachers around?
We actually have a pretty good pipeline for CLINET.
Yeah.
Better than some of the other districts. And so we have quite a few folks that are, that are CLINET-trained. In addition to that, though, we also, you know, of equal proportion is the mentor piece, where our alternative cert folks, we have a lot of the mentor piece folks as well. But CLINET is actually, luckily...
Solid? Nice. Well, this is very exciting, especially since I think, what is it, last year, the year before, University of South Florida almost closed their whole educational preparation program. So the fact that, maybe there's, maybe a resurgence there. I don't know.
Well, I'm like you, I always...
On page two for number nine, the site background check. So it states they do not perform background checks on students. However, we are able to, is, I'm assuming, yes. I just wanted to just clarify, like, what background check will we be performing?
Oh, we will send them through our background clearing process. They're responsible for paying for the fees. But we'll send them through the same background process.
So it's if they were an employee, so those students, even though, so I figured, I just wanted to see what, because it says they don't require, but...
No, under the recent changes, beginning July 1, pretty much our volunteers, our interns, and our employees are gonna have, are lockstep the same background process.
Yes, I'm so glad.
But there's a cost factor with that.
Yeah. It's like 22 dollars or something?
Well, the 22 dollars is like a...
Seventy, seventy-five, seventy-two with, with a five-year duration.
Okay.
And then it goes into the clearinghouse. So actually, let's, our interns, yeah. These interns, in fact, will definitely benefit from this, because let's say they go through their internships here in Flagler, and then the interns get hired by us, they would not have to be re-cleared because it's a five-year clearance process, so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Reese, we have one last thing here, 11.01, approval for personnel items.
In early stages of the personnel items, this will be the larger one that we will include once we get closer to the board date, all the reappointments. Yeah, so it will be a big one.
And I spoke with Ms. Moore earlier. I was encouraged to see some of the strategic thinking around some of the consolidation of certain roles in order to be more fiscally conservative and meet our changing demands of the budget. And so some of those things that we spoke about at earlier meetings are taking place, even though maybe it's not apparent right here on the personnel changes. So I'll be interested to see how that also, it's a fine act, a fine balancing act, because we want to also make sure that people have work-life balance and they're not being overly tasked. But, you know, try to be responsible at the same time, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions on Human Resources? All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Okay. So now that leads us to finance action items. This is permission to approve policy 716, authorized travel expense. And Ms. Womack and Attorney Spent Smith, thank you for being here. Who is leading that conversation?
This was, I'll just add the intro, and Mr. Smith can definitely answer any question. This was previously advertised two months ago. We got work permission to advertise. The 30 days has passed, and now we are just asking for permission to adopt the policy. Mr. Smith had several conversations with board members prior to us advertising. So if there are any questions at this time, he will be able to answer them for you.
Okay. I thought I was just having deja vu.
No comments? Opinion?
No.
Thanks.
All right. Anything? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now that leads us to academic services action items. And so this is the FCA contract ratification.
Due to a minor error, we placed it on the academics. It should have been an HRM. This is the culminating work of the two bargaining committees. The contract has been like combed through for all the errant edits and corrections, and so it's going before the board for ratification by you folks.
I will add that both of these contracts have been ratified by the bargaining unit, so they are now ready for your approval.
And the FCA was over 70% yes, and the FESPA was 84% yes.
Wow, that's great.
That's encouraging.
And as you know, these are both full books, so there was, yeah, a lot of, a lot of work.
And I just want to, I think, make mention regarding to some of the faculty salaries, specifically the teacher salaries. I know a lot of times people focus on the percent increase, which is, you know, under 3%. But when combined with their step, if you're making 55,000, that's a four, over a 4% increase. I know it doesn't keep costs up to date with cost of inflation, but that is actually endemic with pretty much all salary ranges, even out in private sector, business sector. Nobody's getting 8, 10, 12% unless you're changing roles. So I, I, I'm pleased that we were able to provide that. I'm hopeful that everybody can interpret that as looking at that salary increase together and not just what is the, that raise. Remember, the raise also includes that step. So I think that's great. And I really, I thank you, Mr. Sanfilippo, for walking me through the FESPA in the alignment of the salary bands. I think that was smart, and also recognizes the extra certifications and does what we can at this moment in time in order to appropriately compensate individuals who hold certifications that will directly impact the work they're hired for. So I think there's a lot of wins here for our faculty and staff. And, but again, all contracts are compromises and, you know, but I think, I really applaud the work of everybody who worked on these, as well as the unions and the representatives who are representing their constituents fairly and doing all the work. It's hard. It's hard.
Are there any questions on 16.01 or 16.02 for the ratification of these contracts? So I'll move us... So I'll move us on to sixteen point zero three. All right, thank you.
You dropped something.
Advent Health, Pomco's Project Search MOU. And we have Ms. Halliday and Mr. Smith. And do we have Dr. O'Brien online as well?
You do.
Okay, very good.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board Superintendent. I'm here to very excitedly share with you an updated MOU with Advent Health for our Project Search program. Project Search, if you are not aware, is a program for our young people that have deferred their diploma and are seeking employment. It is held at our host site, which is Advent Health. And we collaborate with vocational rehabilitation, employee view, and Flagler Schools to help our young people move through a series of, a series of vocational training opportunities to find employment.
Any questions for staff on this agenda item?
Like a good opportunity.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much.
I'm positive.
Chair, if I may, I just want to recognize Advent Health and this partnership. We just recently had the graduation of these students from their work program there at Advent Health. And the amount of faculty that came to this graduation for these students was just overwhelming. And they got so many different experiences. Dr. Halliday, if you would just briefly share some of the experiences that our students had with this partnership. So I just want to just recognize Advent Health for all that they do for our students and especially this program. Because they truly embraced our students and gave them a great opportunity.
That is great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Our young people have been able to work through a variety of different departments at Advent Health. And how it works is our young people team do an interest inventory and then we match them with one of those departments. They've worked in food service there. They, we have one young man who basically took over the whole section on laundry. Like, he just took it over all by himself. It was not a real, he didn't need a lot of job training on that. So he, he took his pad, he was able to go into all the rooms, get all of the laundry, take it, take care of it, bring it back. Food service, they were putting together the meals for those folks that were in the hospital and also those that were in the cafeteria. So that's two totally different rotations. We had one young man who's been offered a position with Advent, so we're very hopeful for that. But he is helping with, with some waste management work for them. All of them, as Ms. Moore pointed out, it was, it was a wonderful experience having all of the different administrators join us for this graduation as well as the leaders for each of the departments. I think that if they could have hired all of our, our students, they would have. But they didn't. They got one or two. And one of our previous, just for full, to bring it all full circle for you, one of our previous Project Search students is now a mentor for our current class.
That was great.
So that's pretty wonderful.
That is great. Just another example of the many pathways we have to success for our students, yes. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thanks for that contact. Don't go anywhere. I think you're next.
Yeah, we still need to, we got Nefec coming up here, operational services.
And Board Chair, I have asked Ms. Louise Bossardad to join Mr. Attorney Smith for this topic.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you. So as you see before you, you have a renewal of our contract with Nefec. It is broken into the various services that we have with Nefec. And you can see the breakdown of the fees in the table below. Broken out by main contract, instructional services program, enterprise resource software, risk management, document archiving, virtual instruction. Do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, so there's been some discussion in the past on, is it still advantageous for us to have this partnership? So if you could illuminate a little bit about, like, when we are, let's say, Skyward, what is the cost savings for us to have this negotiated through Nefec versus us purchasing those licenses, which is, you know, essential for our, our functioning? As well as anything else that you feel maybe is advantageous for us to stay in this agreement with them?
Well, so part of the benefit of being part of the consortium, as a relatively small district, we don't always have the ability to hire all the personnel that would be required to support all the different areas in which they support. For example, in the previous agenda topic, the question came up about, do we have the teachers who have the credentialing that's required in order to support other teachers? Through Nefec, we have the PLCP, which is the Professional Learning Certification Program. We have the ability to have Clinet training, so the train-the-trainer model that they've supported us for, for several years. And grant support data visualizations, that's under that instructional component. In the Skyward realm, in addition to the hosting and helping secure our data and keeping with data privacy elements, they assist us with providing all the support, anything that comes out from the DOE, pushouts, topics, just the help ticket system alone. I can't tell you how many tickets we do submit to them. That might be something that ranges from, you know, the state just recently pushed out the Seal of Fine Arts. So it's developing the reports that come through there and all those other elements that we collectively as a consortium can put together, but independently would take additional manpower. So while it might seem like an expense, I don't necessarily, I can't necessarily tell you the cost savings if we were to break a slum from them. But the services that they provide to us are invaluable at this point.
And is there a different level of partnership that you can have? For example, as we continue or grow, right, is it all or none? Or is it that you can partner with them for those particular elements as opposed, but maybe break off in some other areas that might be more advantageous?
So on that overall table with the program, there are some pieces that we can restrict and pull back from. For example, actually, in the, if, if you'll go to, I think it's around page, around page thirteen or fourteen, it breaks down some of the pieces for the, if you'll scroll down just a little bit further, right in there. Like the Skyward annual licensing fees, it includes in Part V that RTI module. We're actually in discussions with Nefec. We haven't used that component because we've outsourced and built something in-house. So we no longer need that support piece. So that is something that we're asking for them to remove. So as we continue to find other elements that we don't really need them for, we are restricting some of those components down. A question did come up previously, and I, please understand, I'm not an expert in risk management, but you've asked if we can parse some of those pieces off. Previously, someone did ask on the board if we were able to separate some of those components of risk management. It doesn't offer an à la carte option, so it's a wholesale component. And I'm sure Mr. Smith can speak, do you know more about risk management? You know a lot more than I do.
That's exactly right. So like, there's some technological pieces and other services to which you can, you can excise if you're able to provide that yourself. And Nefec gives us that opportunity as it does to like all the other districts. But when it comes to the risk management piece, it's, it's all or nothing thing.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, but it works out to our benefit.
You know, how, are we one of the larger districts in Nefec?
We are.
We are the largest or, I don't know?
We're one of the largest.
I see. Do you know who the, who the largest is by any chance?
Probably Nassau.
We are the largest. Behind us is Nassau County. Behind Nassau is Putnam.
I thought we were second, we were first.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a valid point that we need to continue to evaluate, you know, that as we're, you know, as we're getting larger and when that breaking point is for us to be out on our own, potentially from a, from a cost differential, but.
We are one of the larger ones compared to those counties, besides Nassau for sure.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at these individual costs, I mean, clearly in time past, this was a huge benefit to us. But as we grow, you know, we're just going to see, see, see the benefits of it financially.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to Mr. Attorney Smith's point, when it comes to risk management, it still is definitely a benefit for us to be a part of the consortium. And we definitely need to, you know, continue to look at costs. But I want to just also add the relational piece with Nefec and being a part of the consortium to have a group of individuals at districts as superintendents that can come, that we can lean on for different things. And so there are many things that come up throughout the year that we need support with, as Ms. Bossardad stated, that we can call Nefec and they are able to support us with, especially around our professional learning plan and the opportunities that we offer to our teachers.
Okay, yeah, and the value efficiency and operational services is definitely part of that weight, you know, so, absolutely. But just something like, you know, it's come up before in previous boards, the previous boards and this one.
Yes.
We're talking about it now, so I think, and the question will probably come up again. So, but glad you guys are taking a pulse on that, so. Okay, any other questions on Nefec?
Just a statement, so when, so when I was following the board, you know, like, last year and the year before, this came up a lot. And so I had a lot of questions with Ms. Moore and then just different departments. And I feel, you know, the pros outweigh the cons as of now. So I like, and I really like how this document was, you know, it kind of shares like each little point. But just for like the public to know too, it really, as of now, from my like research and opinion and like just talking with different departments, it, it does benefit us a lot. I know we're on the bigger end, so I'm curious when we won't be in it anymore. But I feel like we're doing good things with what they can provide. Thank you for.
Thanks for that insight there, Mr. Ramirez. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that leads us now to our final public comment opportunity of the meeting. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. So we will close public comments and we will move on to board member requests. Are there any requests?
I just wanted to just remember or remind everyone, you know, so for public schools, you know, we're really trying to like share the wealth of our communication of all the great things we're doing. So just keeping up on that communication tab of, you know, like, why is Flagler the one? All the great things that we hear that we're doing, I just, just requesting it again, just making sure everyone, I think we're doing a good job, but just getting the word out for the summertime when people are deciding.
Talking about the previous board member request regarding the marketing materials?
Yeah, so.
Like, wondering when that's going to.
Yeah, so FSBA has like a toolkit and it's free. Well, free meaning they, it's all in one. Yeah, it's our, it's included with our fees, right? But I think summer would be a really great time to market as best as we can all the great things we're doing, like the high school activities where students can, you know, take more classes at this college that, you know, you're just, I would love to see the communication aspect of the toolkit out there this summer so we can try to get more students that may want to start high school or middle school or elementary with us fresh. So just piggybacking on my previous request.
And maybe more videos of baby LaShawka Moore?
Yes, I think, I think all of the staff, that was, yeah, I, I think Mr. Don did a great job.
I thought that was very creative.
He should do one with every staff member.
Just to, just to tag on, you know, that, since, since I got on the board, I've been really trying to push out, you know, we need to get more creative with the way we market like other private enterprises do. And I thought that was a great venture into what everybody's expecting right now. And it got so, I don't know how many views, twenty thousand views? So, you know, as we wanted to keep the public and our parents aware of what the great things that we have here, we need to get more creative with our marketing like that, so.
And summer's the time, so that's, so that's my request, just to focus on, you know, we had it on our list, but I think summertime, this is when we need to shine and share all the good things each department has done. Like, why, why this, why this school, why this school, and this is why. And then let everyone know this summer so they can start with us in August.
Okay, so the, the board wants us to do more marketing, so move that forward. Anybody else have a board member request?
I have two. I would like for the board to consider making, adding the following transparency to our school choice process, where we align our school choice process with our district goals. Meaning obviously the first and foremost are the hardship, school choice priority according to Florida statute. However, after that, prioritize the maybe choice of unique academic programs as a reason why a school, a student might want to choose a different school from their home base. And then in research, while a student cannot be recruited to an athletic program, there's nothing precluding a student from choosing a school based upon athletics. And if we make that transparent and open, I think that it would add a lot of clarity to parents, maybe some unnecessary pain points that maybe they are trying to overcome at this point. And then beyond that, the Florida statute states that really the lottery system does not require any additional explanation of a hardship reason. And then they go into a lottery system, which I understand right now is a, all of those names are put into a randomizer and those names are selected. And so I really would like us to essentially make a little bit more clearer that policy and prioritize hardship, academics, and then athletics, barring, of course, not the recruitment piece.
Okay, so Superintendent Moore noted that for a future agenda item?
Yes, so what, I may have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Ruddy about her request for some addition. As you know, that policy is sitting now for advertisement. When it comes back before you for final approval, we will capture some of the language of what she's requested in that policy for transparency before it comes to you for final approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My second request is in ensuring that we, in our, increasing our capacity to one hundred percent to allow school choice. I was hoping to have us define our capacity in terms of a balance between both square footage as well as staffing ability. And I don't have the proposed answer right now and what that might be. However, I think that we need to ensure that when we are allowing and taking in school choice, that perhaps square footage or those designated student stations established when the school was erected not be the only reason, as we don't want students going to a school where maybe there is a, a lack of teacher in a particular area. It may be some unique solutions like incentivizing teachers to split time, you know, between schools, such as like foreign language or something that's hard to fill. But I, I think that we've got to make a definition of capacity that's responsible between square footage and staff alone.
So definition of a capacity is a board member request, so got that. Any, any others, Ms. Ruddy?
No, sir.
Mr. Vars?
I don't have any today, sir.
I'll just share, just because I've received multiple emails, not that I necessarily am interested. But we had an offer to purchase some property, you might have gotten that one too, near FPC. Is that something that the board wants to look at or who should I forward that to?
I had forwarded that on and I hadn't heard back about that. That came in and.
They keep sending it to me and I sent it again.
Okay, yeah, I thought, well, I know I did forward that on, but I didn't see, hear any follow-up. Just for clarity with the whole board here.
We will make it before you.
Oh, so you do have that?
We will add that.
Okay, good, I'm glad you.
Just so I can let them know.
I just didn't, I didn't get the acknowledgement that, that administration was working on that, so, okay.
Thanks.
Very good. So then we will then now go to closing comments. Mr. Ramirez, do you have anything to close out with today?
Yep, so the graduations were amazing and the promotions, so I want to thank all the teachers. It was really fun to go to. The FTC one recently, then the next day I was at the store, I saw one of the grads and she recognized me, I recognized her. And it was just, you know, you could tell, like, they're just so happy. So I think Flagler Schools is doing a great job with those promotions. And there was the Penguin Project. I just want to thank Benell Elementary School for hosting that for the. I just want to thank Benella Elementary School for hosting that for the second year. And Ms. Jerry Berry did a wonderful job for Aladdin for those students with disabilities and ran into Dr. Holliday there, so that was awesome. And I do appreciate Flagler County Schools rotating camps. And I know I said it a lot, but even this morning, you know, having our families, like with our school districts, caring about people with children and families and rotating different affordable camps throughout our community, it makes a difference to, to do that, I think. So I just want to thank FTC for hosting that camp, Space Camp, and then the district for rotating it between our small little town of Palm Coast. But driving across the street, then across the town is a great difference. But yes, thank you for everybody and the support staff for all the help with the policies. So I think we're getting somewhere, and I'm excited to see where we end up, so.
Yeah, I also want to shout out everybody for having a great start to the VPK program over the summer program that's being held. And that, it was really nice to see, it was a bunch of administrators and other folks from across the county helping to support and make sure that that started off as well as the summer camp. So it's really nice to see everybody pitching in. I also want to congratulate our FPC team in their Future Problem Solvers competition. They came in first place, which in the, what they call Global Issues booklet writing. This is a year-long competition, and we're very excited. That's kind of, that's a really big one to, to win. And I think it's been some time since our high school has won that. So congratulations to those students, we appreciate that. And yeah, I just want to encourage parents to promote some exploratory learning and experiences with their children. You know, they have a term called the summer slide, where students obviously sometimes regress in some of their academics. But there's no reason to be bored over the summer, right? You'd be doing stuff like go pick flowers and take them apart and figure out why they're different. Take different samples of dirt, right? What bait works better with certain fish? Get them out away from the screens, have conversations, do some reading, you know, and, and just experience the world around you. That can do so much for a child, so please encourage those activities and, you know, spend a little extra time bonding with your kids this summer and doing so. Thanks.
I'll be pretty brief. I just want to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Ramirez was talking about with our marketing piece. We've got so many, so much information that's being put out on our social media with our team, what they do. And I want to thank them again for the work that they do. But there's a lot of information on their for parents to look at. But I just ask that they take the time to really look at our website, look at our Facebook pages and all of our social media with all the different events that are happening, happening across the district, especially during the summertime. Again, just, I really appreciate graduation for what I have now. This great cold I've got, that I can't seem to shake. But I'm so proud of all of our graduates and the work that our staff has put into preparing our students and for the next chapters of their lives. And so again, I just, a shout out to all of them. But then just making sure that everyone is looking at our communication that we do have. We have really good communication, so just take advantage of that, please. And I will yield.
Just not much to say, enjoyed graduation and another year to share that with our students. Hope everybody's having a great summer.
Yeah, and I just thank you all for sharing that experience, because, you know, this, this, this graduation, we had three board members, that that was your first graduation as board members. And I remember when, when I experienced that, and it's something special. And so I'm glad you took away the same feeling that I did. And it, it just, it just keeps getting better, you know, every year. See students that we know and parents that we know, just with full excitement. And then seeing all these kids' faces with smiles of joy and some fear and everything else, and all the other emotions that go on with moving on to the next chapter of their life. But, you know, that's a big day where we can say, wow, we, we did what we were, what we were commissioned to do, is get these kids and launch them into the next chapter of their life, so. Just grateful for our staff and all their work on getting this. For the benefit of the public, it was not aired live, but it was recorded, you'll be able to watch it. We had a, a policy review. We are reviewing all of our policies and updating them. And this is a big heavy lift for the district and the board. And the district really pulled out the stops to get it us to this point here so quickly so that we could review these in a timely fashion. So I thank all the efforts of the team on that. And also to the board for coming in early and, and doing all the things we need to do. And we had some great robust conversation. It just shows that your commitment to making sure we get this right, so thank you for your efforts. And I'll yield from there, Superintendent Moore?
Yes, it is a great time of year, lots of great things happening over the summertime. I want to take this opportunity to recognize for the final time, Ms. Bozeman at Matanzas High School and Ms. Kara Kronk at Betty Taylor Middle School, which have served extremely well as principals, and they are moving on to the next chapters of their life. And we are just proud of them and the work that they have done for the students of Flagler County. I want to associate myself with what Ms. Ramirez said about Aladdin. If you ever have an opportunity to go and see the Penguin Project put on by our Flagler Playhouse, you want to take advantage of it. It is such an amazing opportunity where our students with disabilities are the stars of this live performance, and they do a phenomenal job. They are assigned mentors that help them to prepare, and it was such an amazing show. Want to shout out to Advent again around our physicals and ECG evenings. Over two nights, their team saw over 800 students here in Flagler County, ensuring that those students have their physicals as well as their ECG, so that they are in compliance as for July, for the July 1 expectation for ECGs, but also for their physicals, so our students can be able to participate. If you need help or have questions around additional opportunities to get your ECG done, families can go online and find different areas where they are being hosted, especially through the organization Who We Play For. I want to say to the board, I know it was very difficult to make the decision around, around ECG, and I will end with this. Sunday, I was visiting a church in Volusia County, and I had a grandmother walk up to me with tears in her eyes. And she said, at first, we were very frustrated that this was being required. She said to me, though, her grandson, a student here within Flagler County, was flagged as having a heart disease. That student is now going to a cardiologist at the University of Florida. And this parent, this grandmother looked at me and said, I know you guys continue to say that even if we just find one, that it means something different when that one is your one. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the board, thank you to Advent Health for their partnership to ensure that we are able to reduce that barrier for families and get them their physicals and ECG program, ECGs. Lots of things happening over the summer. We are here over the summer. As mentioned, we have an amazing summer program for our younger students that is happening at Beldier Elementary School. And I do invite the board to come out each morning or each afternoon, be a part of the, the arrival and dismissal process there. It is amazing to see all of our schools come together into one school in order to put forth a great program. So I invite you board members to come and be a part of that. And I thank you for your time. I thank our team for helping to ensure that we could still have this meeting, though many of us were away at conferences. So thank you, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your week.
Thank you Superintendent Moore. This meeting is now adjourned.